Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to our April televised Board of Ed meeting. And I'd like to start with asking everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have to say, I feel a little bit like a fish out of water not being at Town Hall, but that, it's all good. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Mr. Bruder?
Here.
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Mrs. Dorr?
Mrs. Glidden?
Ms. Levesque?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Six members present and voting.
Perfect, thank you. Our student board reps, starting with Lyman Hall, Grace? Hi, how are ya? Welcome. What'd you do to yourself?
I dislocated my elbow.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to hear that. I hope it recovers quickly.
Thank you. Alright, so, all the students and faculty came back well rested from April vacation and now we're starting off with a blood drive coming up. Junior prom tickets are on sale now and the prom will be held on May 13th. The Lyman Hall Culinary Arts class will be opening up a pop-up shop, serving Asian fusion cuisine to the community at Wallingford Hubcap on April 28th from 4:00 to 8:00 and April 29th from 11:00 to 2:00. They worked very hard to get this restaurant ready and their menu collection will be available on their website. The Lyman Hall musical, The Little Mermaid, will be performed on May 4th, 5th, and 6th. The cast has been hard at work for months working on the amazing musical and we hope for a big turnout. The Lyman Hall of Fame night is May 12th, awards night is May 15th, varsity scholar night is May 17th, and the scholarship night will be May 24th. Senior prom will be held on May 26th and before that, on the 22nd, there will be a mock crash performance. Finally, our spring sports teams have been doing great so far. On April 19th, our softball team defeated Sheen 3-1 thanks to a great team effort. The golf team won 180-177 over Law the other day, remaining undefeated. April 21st, our girls' track team won 2-1 in their quad meet. Our baseball team recently won 4-3 against Notre Dame, improving their wins to 5-1. And lastly, on Friday the 28th, there is a lacrosse doubleheader against Sheen on Lyman Hall turf and we hope the team will bring home a win.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Great update. From Marty Sheen, Rajan?
Rajan isn't here tonight. He had a conflict in his schedule, but he sent, of course, his information.
Well, it will not have the same.
So, we knew that Rajan would do that. I am not going to do this as well as he could. But, basically, I'm going to read this word for word. Good afternoon. On April 4th, we had the Health and Wellness Fair. On April 5th, we had a special schedule for testing. Our freshmen had a leadership program run by the National Honor Society. The sophomores had CAP tests and the juniors took the SATs. On April 6th, we had parent conferences. On April 20th, we had the Summer Job Fair. On April 21st, we had a leadership conference for students hosted by the National Honor Society. Guest speakers were Megan Lenzo, Pat Reynolds, and Ken Welch. Going on into May, our spring sports are well underway, including several games against Lyman Hall. For several of these games, we are hosting spirit days within Sheen. By the end of the month, we will be in the postseason play and we'll have the CIAC Scholar Athlete Dinner to recognize Shannon Bradley and Sam DeMaio. We are currently in the process of hiring coaches for field hockey and cheerleading. The first week of May is Teacher Appreciation Week. The first two weeks are Advanced Placement Testing. Junior Prom takes place on May 6th, the Spring Concert on May 10th, AP Art Studio Showcase at Hubcap on May 16th, and the Senior Outing and Class Elections on May 26th. Finally, we have three invitations for the Board of Education. Number one, Varsity Scholar Award Ceremony at 6:00 PM on May 18th, Academic Awards and Scholarship Night at 7:00 PM on May 25th, and CNA Pinning Ceremony at 7:00 PM on May 30th. Next month's presentation will include information regarding activities from May and June. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rajan. Okay, item five, Presentation and Awards. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, tonight, we have several presentations and I'm going to call up different staff members from our district to recognize other staff members. We're very pleased to have with us this evening Mr. Tony Loomis, who would like to make a rec- provide a recognition for one of our Physical Education teachers at Sheen High School.
Welcome.
Welcome, good evening. Frank Moore has been nominated as Staff Member of the Month because of his professionalism and leadership, both inside and outside of school. As a quality physical educator and dedicated coach at Sheen High School, Frank is an unwavering positive role model for students. In addition to his hard work with students, Frank serves as a NCAA Division III Women's Basketball referee. A month ago, Frank's strong work ethic and expertise were rewarded when he was chosen to referee the Division III Women's Basketball Final Four. Frank is much too humble to brag about this distinction. He deserves to know, however, that the school district is extremely impressed with his achievements and honored for his continued service to our students. Being chosen to referee a game of such importance is a testament to Frank's amazing character, the same character our students are exposed to and learn from on a regular basis. Frank, you are one of the many assets Wallingford Public Schools have to offer, both to students and the community. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations. We would expect this only of the adamant and really, really.
Put your back to the camera.
We would only expect this of a very, very profound, very dedicated Yankee fan. So, we would assume that that would be the case.
So, there's probably a lot of Boston fans that would have preferred to see your back on that.
Exactly. I'm so glad you let them see my better side. So, congratulations. Thank you for everything you do. And Frank, beyond what was said, and Tony wouldn't know this, prior to Tony arriving, I kind of worked every so often with the Health and Physical Education Department. And I have to say, he's been, continues to be dedicated. Actually, I have to say, Sheen High School has taken the leadership in this. Whenever we did an audit of equipment or programming, not that Lyman Hall wasn't involved, but Sheen always had all the information readily available and, you know, Frank was always the lead behind that. So, I just want to say thank you for your help with me, because I had no clue what I was doing and you helped this look good. And, of course, all your professionalism and hard work you've done. So, thank you. Next, I'm going to call up Carrie Ladadio, who has two recognitions to provide this evening.
Good evening. I'm here actually representing Kristi Madansi and myself, who have nominated Elise Knickerbocker, who's a math interventionist at Lyman Hall High School, and Sue Duda, who's the reading interventionist at Lyman Hall High School. And unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here tonight. But Kristi and I wanted to nominate both Elise and Sue as Staff Members of the Month. These two interventionists are shining stars here in Wallingford. They share a classroom space that whenever I go in to visit and watch classes and see how the students are doing, I'm always sitting there just smiling. It's very magical. They share back and forth the lessons with their students. Their students, it's not segregated at all. The integration of the math and the reading instruction is constantly interacting. Sue and Elise were both very instrumental when we added intervention at the high school several years back in developing the program from the ground up. They developed and redeveloped the schedule a few times. Intervention at the high school is probably the least known out in the education field in terms of resources and strategies with the students. And one of the things that really strikes me about both Elise and Sue is their relationship with their students and how they take our most struggling learners in both mathematics and reading at the high school and the kids want to be in there. They have students who actually aren't even on their caseloads who want to be in there. It's really great. And I've often said to Sue and Elise that it would be wonderful for people from other districts to be able to come and visit their classroom as a model in intervention. So, I just want to congratulate Elise, who's here, and Sue, who I'm sure we'll see soon.
Just again, actually, you're all the interventionists at the high school level. Your ears must have been burning, as we sometimes say, because when we've been meeting recently with social studies teachers and special educators at the high school level, talking about how to best service students, the interventionists from both schools really came up. And the work that you do, especially at Lyman Hall, is really meaningful. And as Carrie said, I think the challenge at the high school level is that if there's, you don't want to have a stigma attached to students seeking out services like this. And I think that it's so important that you're able to do that, you and Sue and our other interventionists, but in particular you and Sue, in a way that doesn't give them that stigma. Because that's tough, because as soon as that happens, then kids back away. So, that's a real tribute to your hard work and your personality in connection with the students. So, thank you. All right, and the next one I will take, and it's my pleasure to do so, because I know that Cindy wanted to speak also on behalf of Doreen. But Cindy, unfortunately, Cindy LaVella, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, was on a phone call, so I can't pull her away from that. But I do want to just share, those of you who do not know, Doreen Dressel. Doreen is the lead teacher at our EEP program, Alternative High School Program for High School Students. That's housed at Sheen High School. And ever since Doreen has come into that, the life of that program, shall I say, it has taken on a life of its own. And it's really been an amazing opportunity for those students, helping cultivate a family, helping cultivate a professionalism among the staff that really sees themselves as being meaningful in the lives of those students, but also the fact that those students have a lot to give to them as professionals. So, Doreen has really taken it to a new height. She's done her own SWOT analysis with the staff, really looking at what are their strengths, what are their weaknesses, what are the opportunities, what are the threats, and moving that staff forward as well as the students. And she has so many successes this year in particular to celebrate, students going off to college from the program, to have a successful reentry into, you know, life after high school. And then, again, just really spearheading a lot of initiatives, looking at wellness in her environment, looking at the social-emotional learning of the students, but also being an advocate for programming. Last year, the Board of Education heard and supported the addition of a school psychologist for the program. And really, that was Doreen behind the scenes saying, "We really need to do this. This would be really great for the kids." And so, it's easy when you have somebody who's, you know, whispering in your ear and we know that it's the right thing to do and it has such positive effects. So, tonight, we'd like to recognize Doreen Dressel as another Staff Member of the Month. So, come on up. The next one, basically, this individual has grown to be known and become a rock star in our school district also, just over a short amount of time with us. She sometimes forgets that when you get recognized, you need to remember all the people in your life and not just get recognition in a vacuum on a day during the middle of the week without your husband or your mother present to recognize her. And our counseling staff all know what I'm talking about, and you knew I was going to say that tonight. All the counselors are smiling and laughing and giving me thumbs up. Yes, you needed to say that. Because Melissa.
Your mother made you macaroni that night?
Exactly. Melissa, this award is much less to do about you than it is about your mom and your husband and your family. Because behind every great woman is a great man.
All right, all right, now we're pushing it. Now, we're pushing it.
So, with that said. I know, I know. I knew Mike Votto would love this. But at this time, because I know, and you should see the staff, they're all loving this too. So, Maura's like, this is good, thank you. But I would like to call up, there's a representative from your professional organization tonight who'd like to explain a little bit about the amazing award that you received, and we want to give you that recognition this evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Virginia Delong and I am the Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Connecticut School Counseling Association. Each year at our annual conference in March, we honor school counselors from across the state for the work that they do in our schools. One of the awards that we give is for the School Counseling Supervisor of the Year. This year's recipient was Melissa Isles. Melissa is beyond dedicated to the school counselors that she supervises, in addition to the school counseling profession as a whole. As stated in her nomination, Melissa is hands-on supervisor. She does not stay in central office, rather she is collaborating and working directly with her school counselors in the four buildings she supervises. Mrs. Isles ensures all students within her buildings and across the district are being given quality school counseling services. She has earned the respect of all faculty, members, and administrators in a little amount of time due to her hands-on nature, dedication, and consistent hard work within her buildings. She advocates for the needs of her students and school counselors, no matter how big the battle or how large the cost. Mrs. Isles has presented at Board of Education meetings on behalf of the school counselors, and I heard she's presenting again this evening, and also acts as a community liaison for ongoing programs such as Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy and the Coalition for a Better Wallingford, a grassroots anti-drug organization that works within our schools. Melissa has increased communication among school counselors from the middle schools and high schools, which has helped create consistency for our students, in addition to providing meaningful professional development opportunities for the school counselors and other staff members. Mrs. Isles has created an environment where staff enjoy coming to work, and her contagious energy for the school counseling profession has proven to be an incredible benefit to the students with whom the school counselors work with. On behalf of SISCA and the Professional Recognition Committee, I would like to congratulate and present to you Mrs. Melissa Isles as School Counseling Supervisor of the Year 2017. Melissa was presented with a plaque at our conference, our March conference, in recognition of her award, but I would also like to present her with a certificate on behalf of the Connecticut School Counseling Association. You're very welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I really enjoy working here. I love all my counselors. Speaking to the mic.
I just want to say thank you for the Board of Ed, for the support of the School Counseling Department, as well as the School and Career Specialists. And I want to thank all my school counselors and career specialists, how hard they work. They make my job a lot easier. So, thank you, and thank you too. Thank you. So, I just want to say a couple of words if I can. So, on behalf of the Board of Ed, obviously, congratulations, Melissa. You obviously make us very, very proud. But on a personal note, a couple of things I have to share with you. So, I got a letter in the mail addressed as the Superintendent of Schools in Wallingford. So, my husband was really, really happy because he's like, "Wait, does that mean you're getting paid for a change?" But, no. So, I actually, for whatever reason, I got the letter announcing that she won this award. And I call up Sal and I say, "Isn't it great about Melissa?" He goes, "What are you, what are you talking about? I don't know what you..." So, I actually found out, as the superintendent apparently, before Sal did, that she won this wonderful award. So, I, but I kept my mouth shut. I did not, did not say a word and I made sure Dr. Menzo had the opportunity to share the news with you. So, for the Board of Ed, this is a new position. We created this position a year ago, really. And for me personally, this position is very near and dear to my heart. And when we were interviewing for the position, I think we all had high expectations and hopes, and this bound of energy came in and told us this was her dream job. And, you know, she would be so honored to participate and be, you know, be asked to become a member of the Wallingford Board of Ed team. And I have to say, I knew she'd be, we all knew she'd be fantastic, but you have beyond exceeded any expectations we could have had for this new position. And what you have done for both sides of school, you have worked so collaboratively and you've got a great team. It's an amazing team. And you just, you tie it all together and the work you're doing with our high school students, all of you, all of the Guidance Department, both sides of town, the work you're doing is so significant on so many levels. And we are so grateful, Melissa, for having you at the helm. And I, really, I feel bad, someday you will leave us, and because you were the first person in this position, I feel really sorry for that person that is coming in and the expectations that you have set, frankly. I mean, the Board couldn't have set as high of expectations you've set for yourself. So, we thank you and we look forward to working with you, hopefully for many, many years in a collaborative way. So, thank you, Melissa.
Just for the record, you're not going anywhere too soon, number one. And number two, see why this was important to do tonight, so your parent, your mom and your husband could hear the good news. If they could stand up. Because they need to know, first of all, that you're part of a family when you come here to work and that you have your family at home, which we know is very important to you, and we hear a lot about, great things. But we want them to know that you're in good hands here, too. So, thank you for everything you do. Thank you for allowing us to work with her. I'm sure you're probably, like, sometimes take her longer hours, but we.
Dr. Menzo, may I say something?
Yes, absolutely, so.
You know you got the job, because that night, you remember, and you got interviewed, it was a lull in between or something, you said, what did you say you did?
That you went to eat macaroni.
You went home to mom and she made you macaroni. So, Mom, you did help her get the job.
She had fresh ball that night, too, so.
All right, with that said, thank you so much for coming also. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you for having me today. And may I just say to the Board of Education, on behalf of the Connecticut School Counseling Association, we greatly appreciate the sport that you give to school counselors in the state of Connecticut, because the work that we do is very important with our students. So, thank you.
No doubt. Thank you. Thank you.
And tonight, tonight is only fitting that we have many of our school counselors who work so hard and really have coalesced, I think, as an incredible team. I would say, you know, really as a dream team in terms of pulling together a group of people at the middle school and high school level to such, to reach such great heights. I mean, really, I don't think, and hopefully tonight you'll see the many things that I don't think a lot of our public know what's going on in our counseling system right now, this year versus two years ago. So, Melissa, I do need to make sure that you use a microphone. So, if you can grab the wireless, that'd be great, because I could see Evan potentially getting nervous that you don't have the microphone.
I don't want to break anything.
It's okay. We took a deposit.
This is on. All right, so tonight, I want to welcome you, but I also want to say thank you so much for allowing me to come back. Last year, I was able to come here and I was able to show a little bit. It was, notice this slides, they're packed full of information. I do have a handout for everybody if you want to take notes, if you could pass this along. Thank you very much. All righty, I'm so, Kim, could you go to the next slide for me? So, I wanted to thank you again. I'm always happy to share how the department is moving forward and growing. Here's our mission statement that I shared with you last year that we came up with as a collective group with the school counselors, as well as the College and Career Specialists. We've worked very hard on it. I'll read it out loud again. "To support the academic, personal, social, emotional, and college and career development for all students in collaboration with parents, teachers, support staff, administrators, and the community in order for students to achieve their personal best." We still believe that, and that is our mission moving forward. And I don't like to brag, you could ask Dr. Menzo, I like to keep everything under the radar, but I did want to share this because it did come out of the healthy survey that we did last year, we did it this year. And I was impressed that ninth graders already have, 87.3 of the students said they probably or definitely will complete a post-high school program, such as a vocational training program, military service, community, college, or a four-year college. That is great, that in ninth grade, they already have a vision. It was impressive, I was at one of the middle schools last week and there were little sixth graders talking about what they want to do, it was so cute. They're like, "Oh, I want to do this." But in sixth grade, they're already thinking about that. Also, 11th grade, 90.5% of our students said they probably or definitely will complete a post-high school program, such as a vocational training program, military service, community college, or four-year college. I thought those statistics were great. And those numbers cannot be that high, because we need to work with each other. Not only do the people in this audience here, all the school counselors and the College and Career Specialists, but the parents work with them, the administrators, the support staff, and also the Board of Ed, we all work together to get these great numbers. So, I'm very impressed with that. Again, I don't like to brag, but I had to say those numbers, okay? Sorry. All right. Some other highlights, this was shared as well, I think, in Dr. Menzo's budget report. This year, four-year college, 64.4% of our students go on to four-year, two-year, they go on 17.4. The college prep schools, 0.6%. Career education apprenticeship programs, 4.1. Employment, 9.1. Military, 2.3. And a year off, 2.1. But I was even impressed when I was reading the graduation surveys last year, some of those students who were employed, they were opening up their own companies, like in a detailing business. So, some of our students, employment-wise, too, were opening up their own business where they were co-owners. So, I was pretty impressed with that statistics as well, that I was, wanted to share. Okay? And what we noticed over this, since I've gotten here, is that the communication be open. And I think it's important, because there's sometimes, even when I first got here, I think it was Carrie Ferraro had sent me a newsletter. I didn't even know she sent out a newsletter, but she's been doing that for years. I said, "We got to publicize all that great stuff you do." So, we talk about, at our weekly meetings, about communication to our growing program. We do newsletters. I know Kim's department, they sent out a great newsletter. I know Roxanna spoke about that. The social media. Erica Vercelis is constantly tweeting out information, because I don't really know how to do that, so she does that for me. Emails, the school counseling websites, the college and career websites, all the phone calls, student meetings, parent meetings, team meetings. I have to say, all of this, if you don't have this, the program will not grow. But it's really the hard work of everybody working as this team, but working with everybody, too. We need each other's support for this. Okay? And before I go on, I want to say this, because when I was putting this presentation down together with the staff and we're having conversations, there's one thing I didn't include in that and I felt bad after, so I kind of want to make a mention to it. Today, we're going to take you on a journey of a student and all the activities, all the pro-activities we do, the activities, the lessons, the programs. But what I didn't include in there is the day-to-day response services that goes on in all of the buildings. I'll be sitting there, I'll be in the middle of observing an individual session, I think it was with Mrs. DeSanti. She had to leave, there was a crisis, so then I took over, her student, talked to her student. But how everybody works together. Last week, I was in Wendy's office, you know, the stuff that goes on daily, you don't even know about. And it was, I think Wendy, your comment to me last week, that she had talked to like three or four students that day, and what they had gone through was just, I was touched by that day. So, we don't realize the response to services that we didn't include in that, but I want to let you know that it does go on all the time in the building. So, tonight, we're going to put you on a journey of students from middle school to high school and talk about those, but we did not include all the response to services and that goes on daily, you know that. So, we're going to start off by, Emily's going to start off from the sixth grade, since she's the sixth grade, and Michelle Demora, both are from, one is from Moran and one's from DAG. And they'll talk to you about the journey of a middle school student.
Hi, I'm Emily DeHan. I'm a sixth grade counselor at Moran. It's my first year and I'm loving this position. So, basically, the big thing in sixth grade is the big transition from middle school. The kids go from having one teacher to five and figuring out the whole idea and the day of the middle school. A lot of times, we do self-reflection activities, we explore students' learning styles. Through this, we do a lot of test-taking skills, taking notes, learning how to be a middle school student. a middle school student, how to study for a test, study-taking skills, which is really important when you have two tests in one day. We do goal-setting through Naviance. Like Melissa said, it's amazing, even at sixth grade, they're like, "This is what I want to be." And we're like, "Okay, let's talk about the career path and how you're going to get there and what you're going to do." And it's amazing, and they all work together. Like I said, the study skills, the organization, time management, big thing with middle schools, time management. You know, I have a student, he's playing baseball on two teams, he has a test tomorrow. How are you going to fit in studying? You know, working around his problems and helping him. And this is big for Naviance, you guys are big with Naviance in the high schools, so the introduction to Naviance, getting a handle on the program and understanding it, is what I do in sixth grade. The orientation transition, like I said, transitioning to that day-to-day of the middle school. Positive decision-making, tolerance, social media awareness, big thing in sixth grade, they have no idea that once they put something on the internet, it's going out to everyone. You know, take responsibility, you can't be doing, putting stuff out there. So, we talk about that, making wise choices. And really, you know, I love that you put promoting kindness, just being kind to each other and respecting each other and like lifting each other up. Stress management, it's a big thing in sixth grade, too. You know you're managing one teacher and now you're managing five. How do you handle that? And handling all the schools and the sports and all the commitments you have in your home life. So, we do a lot of that. Yes. I did, um, it was, I have about six girls and I did a mindfulness lesson. We had yoga mats and we all laid out and did deep breathing and stress relief, and Melissa observed it and it was great. Do you want to go?
We appreciated the after-effect also at Central Office.
He wants to know how he got through middle school without yoga.
Come on, we all know. These lessons, are you doing, you're going in and giving these lessons?
I do small group instructions.
It is small group.
And she does the big lessons.
Yeah, the big lessons.
That's what I meant, I'm going to the top. So, in other words, you do, you set aside, you go into a particular classroom and do this lesson? How do you plan that?
Based on students' needs, there's about, there's a handful of girls I see with a lot of high stress and anxiety that they don't-
I'm talking about the first.
The big ones.
Oh, whoa, whoa, the transition to middle school? Oh, I go in and I teach, sorry about that. Test-taking skills, we learn to highlight, take notes, I'm trying to think, social skills.
But you do a lesson during a whole class time, during whose class period? An English class?
Yes. Yes, whoever's willing and flexible, yep.
But they have to allow you to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in addition to that, you do small group counseling for those people in need. Do children have a chance to come to you-
Yes.
-on a regular basis and sit with you maybe once a week?
Oh, yeah.
Touch base with you, that kind of thing? They don't need a 504 or anything like that to do that?
No.
Right. Don't look surprised, because that was the way many times, not one time. Okay.
No.
Thank you.
But that was, that was a really great question. Hi, my name is Michelle Demore. I've been in the district for five years, and I think Wallingford does have many opportunities for our students at the middle school and then as they transition through the high school. In regards to students coming down, I think oftentimes, just looking around the room, some of you are my generation, we may be thinking of the traditional guidance role where, you know, the guidance counselor's sitting in their office drinking coffee all day. That myth, or that myth, I'm hopefully will be dispelled tonight, because students are able to come down. If they are wanting to check in and let us know how things are going with them at home, with their peers, they can come down at any point in time. We do ask that a teacher grant them permission to do so. If there's a crisis situation, again, they can come down and they can meet with us. If one of us is not available, we do rotate with our students. Emily's grade six this year, we have a seventh-grade counselor and I'm grade eight. If that particular counselor's not available, any of the counselors that are available will ask that child, "Are you willing to meet with me? I'm available now." Or, "Would you like to wait for whoever it might be?" So, we really try to make ourselves available and accessible to students. So, that could be within the classroom setting. Again, you'll see that there is a lot of overlap in what we do from grade to grade in regards to the lessons and topics. There are some different areas in Naviance that as they transition to seventh grade, we may explore a little bit more. In regards to goal-setting, our health classes also do goal-setting, as do some of the seventh-grade social studies teachers. So, again, there's a little bit of overlap, but that's an area where they can begin to build their resume or student SSP within Naviance, where that information will continue to be housed. And as they move from middle school to high school, that Naviance SSP, Student Success Plan, will continue to follow them. So, it's a really great opportunity for our students, as they go from sixth, seventh, and to eighth, to have more familiarity with Naviance, because as they transition to high school, and you'll hear that later on, there's so much that they do at the high school level. So, if they can become familiar and comfortable, which we encourage them on a regular basis, it's not simply a time when we're doing classroom lessons for them to utilize that tool, it's a time that we encourage them to do, even outside of school, because there are so many great resources within the Naviance program. So, I went a little bit off-track, I apologize for that.
Do you want to add the next one?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Eighth grade, there's a lot going on, a lot going on, as students do, begin thinking about high school in regards to their high school options. Are they going to continue on within the district? Are they going to look at privates, parochials, any of the magna opportunities for them? So, we do those lessons, we talk to students, we post information. Again, that communication, getting that information out to students, to families, having that accessible as many times as we can, as just reminders in addition to handouts. So, we do, particularly in the eighth grade, when it comes to thinking about their post-secondary options and doing those high school applications, if it's warranted for whatever program they're hoping to apply to. Educating those students about that process, leading them through that and assisting them and their families if need be. In regards to the high school registration process in the eighth grade, whether it's Moran or, excuse me, DAG, Hammershaw, we assist them and offer them lessons and opportunities. Those lessons are done within a larger setting, they're then done within a smaller one-on-one setting. So, it's really helping them and encouraging them to make whatever the best decision is for them and communicating that with their families, excuse me. That's really important, because oftentimes, we, we want to be certain that the family is also aware of what's happening. So, again, that communication piece is very important. And we need that family unit to really make an informed decision when it comes to high school electives and the courses that their students are going to be taking. And this year, through Lyman Hall, we did some great things. And one of those that we did, I believe it was in February, is had an opportunity for current eighth-grade families to go over to the high school and to really have kind of a workshop where they could go in and they can register and enroll their children for their courses for the high school. So, they could do that independently at home or, again, through that workshop setting. Sorry, go ahead. I just want to highlight and invite you all to our Career Day at DAG, Hammershaw, on May nineteenth. We have a great speaker coming. Moran did that in the fall, so again, that's something that happens. Were you the speaker, Doctor?
No, well, I was a little bit of everything. I filled in where there was nobody.
Hairdressing.
Yes, I did.
Hairdressing? Yes, I get a haircut once a week.
We're talking about Barbara Shaw.
That's all I know.
So, Career Day is another activity that we have going on in the eighth grades, social media, both schools, again, there's overlap between the schools, the promoting kindness. We do, and I believe Moran did as well, No Name Calling Week. So, we're trying to kind of think outside the box and have different opportunities in addition to mix it up at lunch. That's an activity that occurs in October. The anti-bullying activities that we do. So, again, really trying to not only make ourselves visible and accessible to students, but also to support and encourage the great things that are happening within the classrooms and the great programs that are available throughout the country that we can also kind of support and mirror. Any questions?
No.
Okay, great.
Good evening, I'm Lana Pokowski, School Counseling Department Chair at Sheehan High School, and I'm happy to say that my team is here this evening as well, so. And I'm sharing the high school portion of the program this evening with Kim McLaughlin, who will introduce herself, but she is our College and Career Specialist. So, there are so many things that I wanted to make sure to highlight this evening. Everything is a highlight, we do so many things to service our students. As a first-year counselor in the Wallingford School District, I got the year at a glance and I was a little bit intimidated, I'll be honest. There were so many things that we did, events that were held, services that were given, lessons, but the focus couldn't be more on the student, and I was very proud to be a part of that movement. So, in addition to the services that, at the middle school, to talk about the transition to high school, the high school counselors actually go to the middle school, right around the middle of the year, and talk about the high school experience. We deliver a lesson in small groups within a classroom to highlight what they can look forward to at the high school. So, they were able to ask about graduation requirements and leveling of classes and all the things that they were maybe a little bit too intimidated to ask, you know, locker situations, "Do I have to take gym?" The answer was yes. So, the first lesson we have with the students is within the first month. So, we do talk about transition, we talk about the late bus and what it means to have credits and being involved, getting involved in activities and sports. We talk about, well, actually, we met them first at the middle school, but we also are part of the freshman orientation that happens. So, right when the school year is starting, we're getting them acclimated, we're answering their questions. Individual counselors get to meet with their students and answer those, you know, ask those questions and have them answered. The class lesson, we set some academic goals, because it's not all about the clubs and the activities, it is about the academics. And having them focus on the actual classes that they're in, they're probably more rigorous. The study skills that may have worked well in the middle school may not work as well in the high school, and so we address that, studying for tests. You have six or seven different teachers now, how do you manage that? And it's a building, a lot bigger than they're used to. All of these things come into play in that first lesson. We continue to work with them, we meet with them one-on-one to talk about their individual situations, we have them fill out a getting-to-know-you sheet. What kind of family dynamics? What are you interested in? How can we help you? And we introduce, at the high school level, the Student Success Plan. So, we start talking to them about the four-year plan academically, where do you see yourself? If they don't have a particular focus at that time, that's okay, we talk to them about what they're interested in, what they're good at. And we want to match those skills and knowledge about themselves to something down the road. So, we definitely continue to work with them on that. This year, it was the first year that the ninth graders took the PSAT, so we talked to them about that early on in the year. So, we talked to them, we had a parent workshop that was offered through Lyman Hall, and the results were shared, not individual student results, but how to read the report, what the influence was for the future, how they could improve their skills, and how that related to their own personal goal of college, whether it be the two-year, the four-year, however they would like to see themselves achieve. We talked to them one-on-one in a meeting, we reviewed the SSP. We also talked to them about their academics throughout the year. We want to continue to follow up with them. It's not just that first meeting, and thank you very much, we'll see you at the end of the year. We continue to follow up with them, both academically, socially, a lot of those things that Melissa mentioned, the incidentals of the day-to-day world of counseling. We follow up with them at course selection time and match up the SSP that we had started with them at the beginning of the year, see how they're, they're doing, see if their goals have changed. How can we help them pick courses for sophomore year to achieve their own personal best? And then, we really work with students to develop their SSPs, because it's really important as they develop that four-year plan to talk about the stress management, to talk about their academic success, to really emotionally fit within the confines of a high school. So, we address the whole student with regards to that. Yes. Yep, no, that's good. I think that was all for me, the ninth-grade orientation, yep.
Hi, I am Kim McLaughlin, I am the College and Career Specialist at Sheehan High School. Jane Greaves is my counterpart over at Lyman Hall High School. And as Lana said, we are kind of shaking this up a little bit, tag-teaming it a bit, because we work so very closely with all the students together, we are one department, and we try, try and work very, very closely with the school counselors. We are there, the College and Career Specialists are there to assist the school counselors to provide programming and events and, and extra hands and extra help and, and really, really work towards the, the college and career piece of a student's schooling. So, we are all about post-high school plans. So, as far as freshman year goes, as our counselors, prior to me speaking, have said, they have done Career, Career Days at DAG and at Moran, and they do talk about those things. But when it comes to high school, it starts to become a reality. And so, during freshman year, what we're trying to do is set the stage and help the students understand that this really is a reality. And this isn't something that they can just kind of put off and listen to their teachers or listen to their school counselors and think, "Oh, yep, it's coming, because I know when I'm in, in elementary school, my next step is middle school. And I know when I'm in middle school, my next step is high school." When they get to high school, they realize that, or it is our goal to help them realize, that their next step isn't laid out for them. There is not a definite step there. Students may have the idea that they're going to college because that's what their parents have told them all along. Or, they might be telling them that they're going to work in the Family Store, because that's what they've been told all along. But the reality is, they have choices. And this is the time when we start to introduce them to those choices. So, during freshman year, it is really just exploratory, it's really just an introduction. We introduce them to, we have the College and Career Fair there. That's probably one of the main things that we do for freshmen. It is not an event that people normally think freshmen have to go to, but they are invited to attend. We want them to attend, we want them to go. We're not, we don't want them to go because they're choosing their school, we want them to go because it is an overwhelming event. There are a hundred or so opportunities at that event for them to choose from. And it's time, it's a good time for them to start getting their feet wet and realizing, "Oh, this is what I have, this is, these are the choices I have, this is what's going on." So, the College and Career Fair is one of the main things they're invited to. The other thing that freshmen do at this point is they get the idea of doing a job shadow, because the flip side of every, every college counselor is the career counselor, because college needs to lead to something, or a career needs to have a pathway. However you're going to look at it, that's, that's the gist. So, the career side of this is the Community Connections Program. I hope you've heard that word before, but that is a program that we've built, that in other words, is our job shadow and our internship program, which I'll talk a little bit more about. But as a freshman, they do have the opportunity to participate in a job shadow. They're at the age where they can go out for a half a day or a full day and participate in a job shadow. And that simply means that they get to observe somebody in a career that they chose and observe it for the day. Hands tied behind their back, they're not allowed to do anything, but they can, they can watch, they can listen, they can ask questions, they can do those kind of things. We do our very best to set them up in an area that they are interested in. We have many community partners, that's what we call them, our community partners out there. And sometimes, we don't have something that matches what they want, but we work really hard to try and find it. Doesn't always work, but we, but we give it our best shot. So, how does this roll over into from freshman year over to, over to sophomore year? So, these things, they all, as people have said before me, the, the events don't go away. Yes, thank you. The events don't go away. So, our sophomores are also invited to our College and Career Fair. They also have the opportunity to do job shadows. In sophomore year, we are really trying to hit home the idea of the career interest and try and get them to really think about. Now, it's a little bit past the exploratory, exploratory stage, and we want them to kind of really think, "Okay, in three years, you are going to graduate. What is it that you might want to put in place? What is it that you might want to do?" So, they are now doing career interest. Career Interest Inventory, Career Interest Profiler, we use Naviance as a tool that we have for our sophomores. So, one of the lessons that we do with them is, is a lesson, it's in a classroom, we take over a class for a day, we make sure that we touch every single sophomore out there, and they go through a Career Interest Profiler. It is, how many questions is that?
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty. It's a lot of questions about your interests. It's a lot of questions. And they have to ask or answer the question, yes, interested, not interested, somewhat interested. And we really encourage them not to think, it's really a gut-level reaction. So, what ends up happening is that they, at the end of those hundred and sixty questions, they get matched with, hopefully, many, many careers based on their interest levels. Those careers stay within Naviance, they get held there in Naviance's career interest, the results of this career interest inventory do not go away. They are there for the next three years, the next two years, and they're going to and they're going to come back and hopefully use that career interest inventory and the results of that as they could become juniors and seniors to reflect again on maybe what it is that they want to do. So, that is one of the lessons that we do. What we do also during that time is that we, Jane and I really utilize this as our kickoff for our Credit for Life program. At that, at this time, they have now done the interest inventory. They've been given, given all sorts of careers that match their interests, and they are told they have to choose one for a day in February called our Credit for Life program. They have to leave that, having chosen a career for the day, whether that's a nurse or a vet or a carpenter or a soccer player or a musician or a model or whatever it is they choose that day, they will be that for Credit for Life. Now, just nod your heads if you do not need me to go into Credit for Life because you've heard about it a lot. Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, I think, I think, they've heard about Credit for Life. Credit for Life is our, is one of our favorite programs for sophomores. Every single sophomore goes through that program. We bus them all over to, well, well, it's been different places, but this year it was Park and Rec, and I think that's where it's going to stay. It was great. We bus them over there. It is a huge team effort. All of our school counselors are there. They all play an important role. The community plays an important role. Chances are, some of you have been there and played an important role. It's a, it's a really interesting event, but the gist of the event is simply that it takes our career, that they've now looked at it from an interest perspective, and they have to turn it and look at it from a financial perspective. And they have to kind of go through a month of living and pretty much decide, can they live on that salary? Given their choices, given, and make, and basically the choices that they make and how does that turn around? And they have to, and they have to make their budget work. Anyway, I know there's more to sophomore.
So, you were talking a little bit about Naviance and the Career Interest Profiler. We continue to have meetings with students, individual sessions, small group sessions, to talk about future planning and addressing the SSP. So, we're academic check-ins. You had mentioned that the important part was matching the academics to the world of work and life outside of high school, and we really try to bring home that connection to students. Very often, students are saying, well, not very often, but often, they say, when am I ever going to use this in the real world? So, it's, it's part of our responsibility, and we take that very seriously, to give them that real-world application. We need them to understand that what they're doing on a day-to-day matters. So, we talk to them. We bring in parents. We offer parent conferences, you know, at-will, as well as we're available during conference nights and open houses and things like that. So, parents have the opportunity to talk with us one-on-one. Another thing that we did, and I think it's...
Is that the next one?
Yes, please. Yep. Some of the events that we hold throughout the year, I wanted to focus on the Financial Aid Evening. Sophomores are strongly encouraged, freshmen are encouraged, and their families to attend these meetings because they're not only financial aid and filling out the FAFSA, although we did do a FAFSA workshop this year because the deadline was, or the opening date started so much earlier. Instead of January, it was October first. So, we wanted to make sure that we got the information out to the families as soon as possible. So, we had a FAFSA workshop. The other thing that we did was run a Financial Aid Evening, which is a college funding night, which wasn't only getting scholarships and grants. It was, where do you put your money to be in a better position to save for college? So, really starting the mindset of parents and community members earlier rather than struggling at the later dates to say, oh, my son got accepted at this school. Where, how are we going to pay for it? So, we're trying to provide that information proactively to help them out along the process.
Lana, if I could just mention, we do that also at the middle school and elementary school. We're working on it. So, I just want to make, so that will help you in the next few years because your conversations won't be, it won't be their first time having it. So, that was a real great initiative on the part of our middle school guidance staff, counseling staff, and also our college and career specialists working together to try to make sure that we bring that down to the elementary school because it's never too early in the process to start planning. So, I just wanted to make sure that if there are parents watching at home that have elementary children, especially upper elementary, be on the lookout, and of course, our middle school parents also.
Great, thank you.
Sorry.
That's quite all right. Go ahead. That's all right. So, moving ahead to junior year, quite honestly, everything that we do at each grade level builds on the year prior, the experience of the student, the relationship that has been built between the counselor and the student in addition to the teachers and the administrators, the advisory program. All of those are wonderful resources within the school building that have helped the student get to where they are at that moment in time. So, we continue to administer lessons in classroom situations or in large assemblies such as the course selection assemblies to meet the developmental needs of our students. So, in junior year, we definitely talked about the PSAT and the upcoming SAT at that time, the school day option. So, we, that students were aware that this wasn't just a test that the district was asking them to take. This had real-world application for future goals and plans that they had for after high school. So, we were able to explain the college board process. We got every student in the building an account with the college board so that they could access their scores on both the PSAT and the SAT, linked them up with Khan Academy, which is a free service for not only test preparation, but a student who is struggling in, say, geometry could go online and find the resources to be more successful in that skill area that maybe they needed more assistance with. So, students were given that. We continue to check on, in with the students about their academic needs. This year, not to, right before spring break, we administered a lesson on the college search. Within Naviance, we gave them a couple of different ways to start broadening their horizons as well as narrowing their list. So, to start out with four thousand or six thousand colleges in the database was a little intimidating. So, we explained to them to really identify things that were of importance to them. Distance from home. Did they have a particular major? If not, did they want to sit in a classroom that was with fifteen to twenty people in their major? Or did they want to be at a larger school where there was a lecture hall of three hundred? So, we saw some students cringe and do that, and we saw other students rise to the occasion and say, no, I know what I want, and these are the schools that I have identified and I'm going to go look at. So, we give them the skills to go on college visits, college interviews. We really want to focus them on their own personal future and the skills on how to be successful. We review their four-year program, of course, selections, really making that foundation solid so that by the time they're rolling around to senior fall, they're ready to go because the timetable is ticking. It's faster and faster every year, and we want to give them the skills that they need to be successful. One other thing that we do, we offer junior planning meetings with the student. Every student meets with their counselor on a one-on-one session. Parents are invited to attend. A letter is sent home, and we strongly encourage because we want that collaborative spirit. The college application and college planning process is not done in a vacuum. It's done between the student and the counselor and teachers and parents and community members that they've been involved with. We encourage each student to really think about what that college application is going to look like, letters of recommendation that they are going to seek from community members, Dr. Menzo included. And so, we want to make sure that the student understands really the gravity of the situation and what they're looking for, not to intimidate them and scare them, but to encourage them to grow beyond what they're currently thinking about. The Junior Planning Night, it was an event that was also held earlier in early winter, late winter, with a speaker from Quinnipiac University. Quinnipiac and a student from Quinnipiac came to Lyman Hall and presented what it was like on the admissions side of the table. It was very important for parents and students to hear that side of things so that they could understand, well, this is my situation. How would it be interpreted from the college perspective? What can I do to really help myself achieve that personal goal? So, we definitely will continue that type of event so that we can open more eyes, get more of a perspective when it comes to future planning.
Okay, so as Lana was talking about, you know, all these things are happening for juniors. We really kind of have set the stage during freshman and sophomore year, and now in junior, we really expect them to come to the table and to really start putting some of this plan into a bigger plan that's going to go into action soon, to put it mildly. So, what does the College and Career Center offer? Some of the program that we do with the, with the school counselors to offer our students so that they can really explore what their options are and put them into place. So, college, college, college. What do we do in that area? Starting right, right in September, we do have college rep visits. And these are not open to only, only juniors, but seniors as well, and even sophomores and freshmen if they want to go. We never tell anybody they can't come, but the people that, that are generally going to take advantage and take, make the most out of the junior college or the college rep visits are our juniors because they're the ones who are really trying to narrow down what schools that are, they are looking for and what, what their next step is going to be comes, come senior year when they're actually making applications. So, we have over, let me see, I know I have it written down here. We have ninety-plus reps that come between September and December. They come two times a week from eight o'clock in the morning until ten-thirty on the half hour. So, we have ninety, ninety reps that come in from various, various four-year colleges, two-year colleges, military, career schools. Am I missing anything? Military, I feel like I'm missing something. Career schools. I don't know, trade, trade schools, career schools, military, but mostly colleges. So, they're coming from all over, mostly up and down the east coast and in, in our area. And they come and they just visit with our students. Our students get to sign up. They come down, they get to meet with them. Our juniors are using these visits. As I, I'm always telling them, you have to use these visits for different things. Our juniors and sophomores are probably using these visits for exploratory. They're trying to find out a little more information about a school, do those kind of things. Seniors, what we're really hoping they're using these visits for, face-to-face contact. I tell them, you know, your application becomes much more real if you, if you are now a real person in front of that admissions counselor. So, our college rep visits are very important and something that will definitely continue, and the more the students know about them, the more they come down and visit with them. Sometimes we have ten, twelve students visiting with a rep, and then there's times when a rep gets one student and they get a nice one-on-one time. And that's, that's kind of exciting for those students. The other thing that we do is, that is pretty, pretty unique to Wallingford, from what I understand, is I call them, we call them college road trips. They're field trips, but college road trip sounds much more fun. And we always go to UConn. We make two trips. That trip is very popular, and so both Lyman Hall and Sheehan has their own trip to UConn. In most cases, we, Jane and I partner very closely together, and we go on our field trips, and we take students from Lyman Hall and Sheehan at the same time. But UConn, so many students want to see that, so we pack a bus. Each, each of us packs a bus of forty students and, and head off to UConn. We also make sure, we, that we tell these students why we're visiting these schools. We're not visiting UConn just to visit UConn. Some students are, but we're not. And we make sure that we capture them on the bus, and we always give them a talking and explain to them why they're actually, why they're doing what they are doing and what they should be looking for because there's no better place than a bus to talk to students. They can't go anywhere. It's fantastic. So, UConn is a large university. I mean, to some people, it's not Penn State or one of, you know, University of Maryland or whatever, but, but it's a large university. It's a rural university. And so, we want them to see what a large state university looks like. So, if you can, if you're going to UConn, you can use this information, especially if you're a junior. You can use this information, not just because you're visiting UConn and finding out if you like that school, but you can decide, do you like schools that are rural? Do you like schools that are this large? Those kind of things. You can definitely use this information. We also visit medium-sized state universities. So, we alternate between Central Connecticut State University and Southern Connecticut State University and go back and forth. Each year, we, we visit one of those. We usually visit a small or a smaller private university to, so students can find out what that is, that experience is like. We've gone to University of New Haven. We've gone to Quinnipiac. And we always, in the spring, visit the community colleges. We call it our community college road trip, and we hit both Middlesex and Gateway in the same day. It is a very packed, busy day, but we always have a busload of students and we take them on, on that trip. That one is in the spring because, just because the community colleges, you don't need to apply quite as early. So, we do that. We usually are lucky enough to have a school, a specialty school, who wants to pay for us to come. So, this year, we visited New England Institute of Technology in Rhode Island, and we took a busload of students there who were interested in the trades, engineering, drafting, those kind of things. Last year, a couple of years ago, we went to MCPHS, which is Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Science in Boston. That was a really fun trip for those students who are interested in the medical field. It was great. Let's see. So, we do our college road trips, our college, and obviously, our College and Career Fair. And in this case, unlike the freshmen, who, who we invite and we, we hope to attend and we want their parents to come with them, juniors, on the other hand, when I see them walking down the hall, I say, I will see you at the College and Career Fair, right? I will see you there, right? I will see you there, right? We, I try and set it up as an expectation that they're going to go. I think it's very important that they get in there and walk around and start to talk to people and do those kind of things and start to make these plans. The College and Career Fair is held in October for a reason. We moved it to the fall because we want them to utilize all of their time during junior year to visit these schools and to get out there. So, we purposely did that. So, college, college, college. The other thing that really kicks in junior year is the internship and job shadow program, as I talked about. So, that, job shadows are open to freshmen and sophomores. Starting in junior year, it's actually by an age. It's the age of sixteen. So, some, some sophomores can do it. Actually, that's not true. We made it just juniors. That's not true. Junior and sixteen is actually what it is. You have to be a junior and sixteen years of age to do the internship program. An internship program is very intense. Not everybody can do it. It is forty hours. It's a ten-week program where they get to do, dive a little more in-depth into a career that they want to explore more. They get some hands-on, hands-on work, and they usually have to be there two days a week, depending on, most, most internships are two days a week, for two to four hours each time. No, I'm thinking. No, I'm sorry. Okay. So, I need to look at my notes. I can't remember what I wanted to say about them. The junior, with the internship program comes, they are, they're, they are required to do an internship advisory program with us, which is the other, they're not just going out there and having this experience and not having anybody to process with. During the advisory periods in the high schools, which is one or two times a month, they are required to come in and meet with me. Anybody who's going out on an internship has to come in during that time. They process the internship. They talk about the internship. They do have to do a health and safety on-the-job training. That's mandated by the state of Connecticut. We do that. We have them do resume writing so that they get that experience. That's held during that time. But we also talk about workplace etiquette and those kind of things and what's happening in there. We talk about the culture that they're experiencing in there and help them getting to know these words so they understand what it is they're looking for and that it's not just the, the skills of a job that's interesting and important, but, but also the, the atmosphere of a job that's also important that they should be looking at. Okay? I think that's the highlights for junior.
And finally, senior year. They wish for it. They hope it. They make it happen. And whether they like it or not, senior year rolls around, and the end is in sight. And for a lot of students, that's pretty scary. We talked about it earlier, that, you know, students as early as sixth grade are thinking about college, and after high school rolls around and by the end of sophomore year, junior year, all of these things they're exposed to. And so, our hope is that they take a little bit from each of those different events and lessons and really take them to heart so that by senior year, when we're actually talking about the college application process, they know that it's deadline-sensitive, that it involves more than just them. It's going on those college visits with parents. It's taking an interview and being able to present themselves in a, in a good state, dress orally. All of these things come together so that by the time we meet with them before school starts for a Common Application Workshop, parents and students, they're, they're ready. They know what schools they're applying to, or they're really close. And so, our plan is that through the college application lessons and Naviance, we're working with them to get their own particular list, their own particular goals. We're reviewing the SSPs and lessons. We're meeting with them one-on-one to talk about their specific stuff. Do you still need letters of rec? How's that essay coming along? And that conversation happens all year long. I hear, I hear students popping into counselors' offices, I got this letter. What does it mean? They know how to read, but they don't know how to read the text that's in front of them. It's in a foreign language. It's got a vocabulary all of their own. It's grants and scholarships. And you can get this renewed, but you have to do this. So, they, they ask us to really go through, and we're their parent at school, and that's great. We love that sense of responsibility that they have and the trust in the relationship that we've been able to build with them. So, we go over that. They do write their college essay in English class, which I, for one, think that's a wonderful asset for our students. I would like to put a plug out there that maybe the students write that in junior year. Just saying. That would help the students, along with the resume writing, move that forward and be a little bit more prepared for those visits and the things that they're really finalizing in their senior year. We're using Naviance as a tool of communication. We've been building all of those inventories over the years. Now, it comes to pass where the student is requesting letters of recommendations, filing their applications. It's a great tool for all of the parties involved in order to be able to successfully hit submit and have a completed application for that student. We also have scholarships available through Naviance, and that has become, you know, always has been, but it's become an even more important topic as the cost of college education really has risen. So, we have resources available on the Naviance website, and I have found new resources through Ms. Isles and others from the community and people sending us information about scholarships. So, it's really important that we e-blast that information. We send it out to students via email and in-school announcements. We remind them... We remind them religiously to check Naviance. Everything is updated as it comes in. So it's really important that they are, we're communicating that information out. We're sharing those opportunities with students and with parents and that we hope they take advantage of them. I think we did highlight most of those. You know, do you want to finish with the "I've got plans"?
Just Lana, you-
I'm sorry, yes.
You brought up the scholarships and if I can, I just want to clarify because I know a lot of people watch all of our televised meetings and especially when it comes to scholarships, parents might, their ears might perk up. They should start looking at Naviance. They can look at this at any point to start looking at scholarships, not just senior year. They could look in sophomore to see what fits them, but that's where our repository is, correct?
Yes. Yes, the link is active at all times.
Because we get a lot of questions about financial aid and I know that, and I, I heard Mr. Vado say, you know, "Naviance is where everything is" and he's got triplets coming up, but they're, they're young yet. But they're not his, that is personally, his grandchildren. But I know that, you know, so, but we, and I know I personally send Melissa, who I know then kindly sends to all of you.
She sends them to us and we send them out.
But I know the protocol that I send them to her because she's the leader, so I, because I don't want to undermine her authority. But I, so I send them to her and I know that, so now those, do those go into Naviance or do those go out? I just wanted for clarification, just for parents.
They do. The scholarships that come to our attention all go into Naviance.
Okay.
And they are, they're-
So it's all in one place?
Yes. Students can check the Naviance scholarship site at any time. They are predominantly available to graduating seniors. And so students who are juniors can look at the scholarships that are available. There might be some that are available, but predominantly for graduating seniors. And we tell them in August, in September, October, all the way through June because each scholarship sets their own deadlines. They set their own criteria. They set their own markers, as it were. And so we facilitate those searches and the scholarships for the students. And we strongly encourage them to take advantage of them.
Do parents have access to that?
Parents do, yes. Parents have access through their students, through their students' account, which is the student login and so they can ask their students or there is a guest portal that you can get into Naviance as well.
Because I mean, I can remember years ago when my children, my, my son, for instance, was in college, high school. I mean, Lyman Hall had a book this thick with all kinds of scholarships, but who knew about it, you know? And I think we missed the vote on a lot of things, but, and I think, I don't, I'm hoping the children know about this. I think that was one of the things that was lacking. They didn't realize there were so many scholarships that are offered by so many different corporations and whatnot, even here in town, that they're not aware of. But if there were, they'd all be in this Naviance.
They would. And in my tenure in counseling, we did have a binder, you know, we did do that. We strongly encouraged, we brought people into the office. We said, "Sit down with this binder." I find it so much easier to do it online because a lot of the applications are linked. So we send out a generic email with the link and say, "You need to check this out. This is for you." And that instant gratification of today's student, it fits that need. So, yes.
And as long as I'm asking, do you have a good relationship with some of the more prestigious colleges or colleges that most children will apply to? The more, more popular ones? Is there some kind of relationship with these colleges to find out or to know what their hook is, what, what they're looking for? Because, you know, as I've seen over the years, there's really no rhyme or reason why kids get into certain schools.
And it changes year to year, yes.
You know, it's, it always, never ceases to amaze me. I, I've known kids who almost had a perfect SAT score and didn't get into Princeton or something. You know, you wonder, do you have that relationship with colleges where you kind of get an idea where to push kids because, you know, what, what you have, what you're, what's in your resume might be, this might be the place for you because this is what they're looking for?
We do have a strong knowledge of colleges in our area and the higher-level colleges. I've heard the counselors calling the colleges. You've got to talk to, you know, "This student and can you go over this application with me?" And so it is really important to build those relationships. Obviously, I'm coming into Wallingford Public Schools this year, so I am starting to develop those relationships, but my team definitely has that and I, as I'm sure that Lyman Hall does as well. And if we don't know, we call.
Is there an increase in colleges who are becoming SAT-blind?
It's fifty-fifty. Quite honestly, the-
And we're accepting ACT. That's my fault.
Okay, couple of questions there. All right. SAT or test optional would be the, the term that they use. Schools are looking at their current freshman class and they've been able to track that over the last couple of years to see whether or not the SAT is a true indicator of student performance. And so on a particular school, like college level, they've been making those decisions. Has there been more of a trend towards it? I would say it's becoming more aware to the general population. So I think the push is to become more test optional. I would say that more the, the upper-middle portion of the schools would be going more test optional because they're looking at the transcript as the true definitive factor of a student's ability to perform at their school. So the transcript is still the first and foremost, followed by the activities and the well-roundedness of the student. And then the ACT question. The schools that I've talked to, it is equally accepted.
Equally new?
Equally accepted. And it will say that in all of the different admissions requirements, yes. I know the ACT will be going under a revision in the next year or two, the SAT having just done that. But schools will let you know whether they are accepting of both. My experience has been, yes, they will accept both equally.
Because I've always been under the impression the ACT was a fear test. I don't know what I mean by that. I mean, that's what I was told.
Correct. When put side by side, in the years past, the ACT was based on curriculum that a typical junior would know and the SAT was the tricky test and they were trying to make it more user-friendly.
Now, my last question, and I might be jumping ahead because maybe that's second to the last one is the one I'm thinking of. Construction fear, manufacturing, career fear. Is that for your non-college-bound? I don't, I don't want to mess up the apple.
Could you repeat the question? I apologize. Could you repeat the question?
I was just wondering if, you know, we're doing a lot here for college-bound students. What are we doing for those that are not going to college? And now if I missed that in your conversation, I apologize.
There's just so much more to talk about. I know. We've been talking a long time tonight. For the non-college-bound students, I mean, what are your options? Your options are, are work after school, military, career. I mean, a, a trade, a, a trade, family business. You know, there, there, there are all sorts of options. We, there is a construction, there's different fairs. So, so just like you heard me talk about, um, no, those were colleges that we did. We, there is a, a, a medical careers field trip that we have gone on. That is generally going to be a, a college-bound student. We also have what we call construction rodeo. That's coming up in the beginning of May. I don't know if it, that's held right here in Wallingford. I don't know if any of you have heard about it. And that emphasizes many of the trades. It also has a career fair portion of it, so apprenticeships are there, which is huge. That's a wonderful way for a student, instead of going to, nothing against a Lincoln Tech or, or a, a private for-profit school. They just cost more. An apprenticeship, you can do and, and get paid while you're doing it. The community colleges have wonderful programs. We have a, a manufacturing program at Sheehan that we run and we have a job shadow component with that. So we have, we have those kind of things. The military does come in during our lunch waves and they're there to visit with our students and meet with them. They are welcome to come to our college rep visits. Let's see, what else do we do? Bristol Tech, yeah, Bristol Tech. One of the other things that I was going to get to, and, and this probably tags right along with that question, actually, was during senior year, there's always that handful of, handful of students in the spring of senior year that, that don't necessarily have a plan yet. We want them to. We work really hard that everybody's going to have a plan, but, but not everybody does for, for, for whatever reason. And there's, and there's usually a multitude of reasons. But, so we try and offer, and what we have, it's May eighteenth, it's coming up. We always wait until mid-May to host this event. We call it our post, post-high school planning fair. And this is really a very, a much smaller version of our college and career fair. So in this case, we have four-year schools that are still accepting students. So their enrolling admissions are still accepting students. We have the community colleges come. They're obviously accepting students. But in addition to that, we also have businesses in the area that are hiring, generally are manufacturing businesses. Ulbrich is coming. They, and they are hiring. They, they were only invited if they're, if they're hiring. I'm very selective about the people who come to this fair. So businesses in the area that might be hiring. Career schools come and, and talk to, the military comes. Who else comes? Did I, am I meeting, missing anybody? Hairdressing, Yuri. We try and, we try and hit all the different avenues that a student might be able to, you know, what he might be able to do. So that happens in May. That's one of the important things that we do.
Kim, how did the, how did the students find out about the services that, that you provide? These career specialists?
Um, the career, the specialists?
Hmm.
In every possible way you can imagine. But one of our main ways is we do have a monthly newsletter. Jane and I put out a monthly newsletter. We send it to all the students. We send it to all the parents. And we hope that the information gets, I know the days that it goes out because generally a student will come into my office and they look at me like a deer in headlights because, you know what? They don't know why they're there. Their parents told them to come down. And so I know it went out. I know the parent got it. What was that? Yes. And the school counselors refer people to me and they, and so we work together on getting the word out there as far as, as far as what it is. It gets tweeted out. It gets, we have a senior, senior court monitor where it goes. It gets emailed. It, announcements are, announcements are huge.
And the location of Kim's office this year, I think it made a really big difference is that she's housed right with the school counselor. So they go up and write and to Kim, the student has a question and they go up, go down to them, go up and she has that information for you too. So it's kind of nice to be all in the same area.
It's very nice.
Same thing if I'm, well, Jane is very close to the school counselor, well, to the school counselor.
Yes. And I also want to make sure that I mention, I know that we've been talking for a long time, but it's coming up tomorrow. So I think it's really cool. We don't do all of this and then just, just say bye. We, we celebrate them. So we have what we've, what we've coined, it's called "I've got plans" day. And we make sure that we celebrate our students and their accomplishments. So after May first, after, after all of this is kind of settling out and people are making their plans and they're doing everything, we, well, it's tomorrow, May first, they do this, but, okay, never mind. That was difficult. Anyway, it's as close to May first as we can get within the school schedule. And we know that our students are, you know, have pretty much put their plans in place and they know what they're doing. But we have cake and we have pennant making and we have them write down what they're doing and we make sure we display it in senior court so that, that, so that the, the students underneath them can see, where is everybody going? What are they doing? What are their plans? And it doesn't have to just be a college plan. It can be any plan. We want, we're celebrating every plan that they have. They take pictures and have a photo booth and different things like that. So we take, we take the Office 45 and we make sure that we, we give them a good high five and, and congratulations on making the plans that you've been work, that we've been working with you so hard to make over the course of four years.
Kim, can I ask, I, I, I might be jumping the gun, but I sometimes worry about our kids once they graduate from our high schools and they thought they had a plan. The plan didn't work out for whatever reasons, no judgment zone, but they become really lost young people. And not everybody, but I've seen it, you know, having a twenty-four and a twenty-two-year-old. I've seen some of their friends, I don't want to say about my kids, but some of their friends, and I've talked to Melissa about this. I, I think our students that are graduating now have a better understanding that, that they can go back to our high schools and you guys are there for them. But what do we do for communicating that or do we communicate that to our graduates? That, that, and, and at some point, does that option not be available to them to go back to their high schools and say, you know, what, who's hiring or what resources or what options are available to me?
I don't know the answer to when, you know, the Statue of Liberty.
Right. I mean, I don't think you want to be dealing with a thirty-year-old, but I mean, in all honesty.
And I would not tell anybody that-
I'm going to make an appointment tomorrow.
Yeah. No, but-
So for example, I don't want to put one of you on the spot, but I will. She had a situation like that this year where a student went back to her. Reached out to her, had, I think, I was, she said, "I'm going to meet with the student. He doesn't go here." I'm like, "What?" She was getting graduated. I said, "Okay." So the relationship they have with the school counselor, but I don't think there's any statute of limitation. I think they're always there. I mean, I-
Right. I, I mean, I, I want to be-
I think we would welcome them back anytime.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, but I just, I'm not sure, are, I think kids that, since you guys have been, you know, what you've formed is, is a phenomenal network and I think kids, I'm guessing kids when they're graduating today or in this spring or next spring, or they know that option's available. I'm more worried about that, like that nineteen-to-twenty-four-year-old out today, that are nineteen-to-twenty-four, that, you know, they, all this may not, or, or portions of this may not have existed and the depth and the breadth of, of what our guidance department has grown in the last three to four years especially. Is that something we, we are looking to tackle or not quite there yet? Or not, or you know what? It's word of mouth.
I, I know that whenever I've been approached by a parent and I've referred them to guidance at both high schools and they've gone and they've gotten incredible reception. I think that one of the things that we stopped doing as a district many years ago, and it was even prior to my arrival, because it became too costly and the data wasn't really good, was that report on graduates and staying connected with them. We kind of, it, it-
That was my next question, actually.
It was something that we revisited. It was that, like, I forgot, it's the registry and, and, yeah. It's not, yeah, we don't, we, we probably get the free version. So, yeah, so we have to, we have to figure out a better way because we investigated the pay version and to be honest, and I know that Ms. Duthy was very integral into helping us investigate this and we realized that it was more of a sales gimmick to, for our graduates and we did, we were afraid of giving that directory information to a third party because we don't want to get involved. But, so we do need to, if, that's something that we can work as a team. I think that with technology and, and we're, we're fortunate to be in a better place with technology now, that I think we can look into doing something. But that repository is a key piece because it's kind of pulling them back in. We did try to have some little reunions last year, inviting back graduates. Wasn't as totally successful as it could be because I think, again, the data that we had wasn't necessarily accurate. So I think probably if we could keep kids engaged in the Facebook page, we know that it's a Facebook generation. So if you do an invite out through Facebook, things like that. But I think it's definitely something that with the energy of your group and the support, if you need it from us, we can make that happen.
I mean, I, I've spoken to students, well, they're not students any longer, but they're in the workforce and I, I've met a few young people that are struggling to figure out what, what should be their next step. And, and it's tough when you're twenty-three, twenty-four. Well, that's another problem. Yeah, I appreciate that. Right. I appreciate that. You and I have talked about that.
But that's also where we can, we can bridge the gap. If, I think they feel comfortable coming to the people that they, that they know care about them. So it's not about the person. It might be the location. So what you could do is if that's the case, because I, I highly doubt that they would be worried about coming back to visit one of their counselors. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the concern. I think it's actually kind of they would have like a reunion. But the thing is that i- if we had, if we wanted to look at, you know, using Hubcap or Adult Education for that matter, or even using this room, whatever may need, if it needs to be a different site so they don't feel like they've, I don't want them to think that they failed because that's not the case. But I know they already have the deep connections with the counselor, so it's just a matter of a different location. That'd be my thought, if, if that's even needed. But I mean, I would defer to the counselors on that.
I, I think we do, this is fabulous, all this that you do, but you know what? No matter what you do, you know, from what I understand today, they say young adults change their careers five to seven times. And, you know, you can do this, you can do as much as you want. I mean, it's up to the individual.
Oh, it is. There's no doubt.
And they, and they, and they, they really-
Well, and also at some point, Mike, it, it also is incumbent on hopefully their parents or have a family resource perhaps that could help guide them too, but not all young adults have that. And I, I recognize that, so, yeah.
And the other thing, in eighth grade, do you ever, I don't know if I go this way, but I will. You know, we do have our magnet schools, all right, that do excel in certain areas that maybe Wallingford can't, you know, provide. Is that an option? I mean, do we talk to the eighth graders about that? Is that part of your, did I miss that?
We also have a, a list of options, not all-inclusive. We put that little disclaimer on that list and provide that to the students for that, you know, blast from the families, have that posted throughout the building. And the, the website for the magnet schools is on there in addition to a number of-
Do any of them come here to sell themselves? Are they invited, do they invite themselves to come here and talk to the students, any of them?
The magnets typically have not.
No, the magnets we sent-
This system is doing a real-
Well, magnet schools, we do send something out, a flyer that they send us regarding open houses. So we do email blasts to parents about the open houses. All right.
So my last, my last, are you done? I think we can be done. The, the information is all on. I can talk about it if you want me to.
There you go.
The last, my final thoughts. First of all, thank you so much. But collaboration with students, parents, teachers, staff, administration and the community will help all students meet their success and achieve their personal best. There is only one success, to be able to spend your life in your, in your own way. And I think that's what you have to do. Sometimes the parents and everybody else has their own mind. It's true. It's true. The student wants it. So, thank you again. I really appreciate that.
I'll thank all of you.
Good job.
All right. All righty. Thank you so much. Great, great presentation. Um, item six, um, question and answer session. Do we have any questions for the Board of Ed? Any questions? Nope. Okay. With that, uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of tentative agreement with Wallingford Public Schools Secretaries Union and E two discussion of acceptance of a resignation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We're in executive session. We are back. And, uh, coming out of executive session, can I get a motion to come out of executive session, uh, for items E one and E two as outlined prior?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We're out of executive session. Item seven is consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept consent, uh, excuse me, consent agenda, item seven point one through seven point one two?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Um, item eight, we have no items removed from the consent agenda. So we'll move on to correspondence. Mr. Vado?
Uh, yeah, we have two thank you notes. Three, three. Um, uh, I believe Dr. Memzo and, uh, recognition of, what is it? Board of Education.
Yeah, your books that got sent.
Our March.
What is it called?
Board of Ed, Board of Education Appreciation Month.
Correct.
Uh, books were given to schools in the name of, uh, board members and we received some thank you notes. One from the Moses Y Beach Library, uh, one from Parker Farm School and one from Yale School.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Uh, item ten, our committee reports. Uh, ACES?
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Chairman. The ACES Governing Board met on April sixth, two thousand seventeen. The minutes of the March ninth, two thousand seventeen minute meeting were approved. The Governing Board enjoyed a student performance by Malanki Welsh, an ECA student who won first prize at the Connecticut Shakespeare Competition. The Executive Director's Report began with information presented by Mr. Joseph Santifanti regarding the auditor's report for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand sixteen. The ACES Education Foundation Gala took place and approximately ninety thousand dollars in grants will be awarded from the proceeds. The Governing Board approved the filing of the fiscal report subject to audit. I reported last month regarding the ratification of the ACES Teachers Association Agreement for the period July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirty, two thousand twenty. To clarify further, the contract includes salary increases of one point five percent, one point five percent and one point five six percent for the three years for those at maximum step and a step increase for those not at maximum. Therefore, as previously reported, the increases are two point seven seven percent in year one, two point seven seven percent in year two and two point nine eight percent in year three. I discussed our concerns with a Governing Board member on the negotiating team regarding the reduction in staff days at Wintergreen Inter-District Magnet School from a hundred and ninety-five days to a hundred and eighty-six days. Teachers' pay schedules have been adjusted by nine days and sickly adjusted from six point five days to fifteen days. Unfortunately, due to the rescheduling this meeting from the second Thursday of the month to the first Thursday of the month, I was unable to remain for the entire meeting due to a prior commitment. There are ninety-seven, uh, Wallingford students attending ACES programs.
So, I.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanna ask, so if I'm hearing that correctly, and I, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse.
I know. They did not, I did discuss with this particular board member that served on that committee regarding, was, was it brought up about reduction in any kind of payment that we would be giving to them and no, that didn't occur?
But I'm, just for clarification for people at home and potentially in the audience and, and just all board members. Are we, are, am I to understand that teachers took a nine-day salary pay cut in Wintergreen?
Yep. The schedules have been adjusted by nine days.
It went down to a hundred and eighty days.
Wow.
No, no, no. That's the students went down to a hundred and eighty days.
No, that's, that's, I, I have a lot of respect for.
Um, I think they went down, what, nine days, I think, too? Yes, one eighty-nine to a hundred and eighty.
Um, in, in the Wintergreen report, um, everyone, ex, with the exception of twelve-month employees, lost nine days.
So that, that's what occurred.
Thank you for that clarification. I, I appreciate that. I appreciate their negotiation team's work.
Definitely. Um, okay, Wintergreen Magnet?
Okay, this meeting took place on March twenty-ninth and the purpose of the meeting was to approve the regular education budget that they are proposing for the next year. As Ms. Levesque stated, the reduction of nine days to both student and teacher work year was a, made up a part of that budget. Um, they're looking at a three point eight percent reduction from the state this year. Um, they are looking into, for non-participating districts, um, putting back on those districts special education costs, which would be discussed when they approve their special education budget. They also are looking to change their, um, recruiting practices by having a theme. So they're thinking more of an arts theme to try to draw in more students and that will be discussed actually at this Wednesday's meeting.
They're trying to find another hook.
Right, right.
Cause they're reducing their days.
Why is it?
Right. Although their school day, they wanted to, they made it a point to state their school day is still an hour longer.
Are, are they seeing, um, I, I know from our perspective, uh, student enrollment is declining, participation, I should say, is declining from, uh, Wallingford. Is that a trend that they're experiencing from other districts or is pockets? How does that go?
They didn't state it by district, but they did recognize the need to have more of a specific focus that would draw continued enrollment into their school.
Sure. Thanks. Uh, school to career rep business link tank?
I was out of town. Was there?
Yeah, no, our next meeting is actually, uh, May twelfth. Every, we didn't have one in April.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
So we have it on May twelfth.
Sure. PTAC update?
Uh, we had our meeting last Tuesday. Uh, we had a, a great attendance, uh, from elementary, middle school and high school parents. Uh, Karen was there, um, as a board rep and, um, we talked a little bit about, at this time of year, elementary, there are parent requests. We send out, I sent out the letter for parents that they could send in letters, talking and sharing with the principal information about their child. However, they can't make a request of a specific teacher. Um, that is not traditionally what we do, but we, of course, always look for, um, parents to give us a little additional information because they know their child better than, um, anyone else. Uh, we also did re- reiterate that obviously if there's a concern at the school level, um, that the best and the first level of communication should be with the classroom teacher. Um, and then if there's continued concern, obviously go to the principal or assistant principal, whomever may be in charge of that particular circumstance. And then, um, you know, last case, uh, or last resort is if they needed to bring it to central office. And then, of course, if they needed to come to the Board of Education. Um, but we really tried to reiterate the aspect, um, or the, the process and the protocol that we try to resolve all problems at the lowest level because it makes, uh, the most, um, productive outcome for students. But our, our, my, our primary focus again was really making sure that parents, cause we tend to get a large turnout from our elementary parents, that we wanted them to understand and bring back to their groups that even though the timeline had somewhat subsided and that there, there might've, people might've missed the deadline for those letters. Those letters are meaningful to, to principals who've already started class placements.
Sure.
But they're also meaningful at this time. We had a presentation from an outside business who had approached actually our office, um, through my administrative assistant, Linda Lavelle, uh, to come and they wanted to share that they could offer fundraising opportunities for schools. Um, and we didn't know which, what was the best forum. We don't usually have businesses come. Um, but they were really not only there about fundraising, but also about career opportunities. So they were gonna, actually Melissa Isles was at our meeting. She was gonna reach out to them. Um, it was, um, in one of the, the local here, uh, salons that just moved into town. Um, and so we wanted to, um, offer them an opportunity. Not that that's the normal venue for that to occur, but we felt that since it tied to career also, um, PTAC really doesn't deal with fundraising per se, but we do career, with career opportunities. So we felt that that was a new, unique experience and we appreciated, um, being able to put that on the agenda. Uh, we kind of did a, a, a significant roundtable discussion about what was going on at schools. It's great to hear the level of involvement, uh, many of our elementary schools have had with the journey mapping this year, um, an activity that we encouraged and had all of our schools participate in, looking at the day in the life of a student through the lens of a parent, uh, looking at the bright spots and looking at the opportunities for growth. And hearing especially, I'd have to say, high point in the meeting was hearing from, uh, Cook Hill, Parker Farms, PTAC reps about recent work that they've done off of the journey mapping regarding social emotional learning. Um, activities for students, activities for parents, and they've really spearheaded that in a, a very positive way. Um, so we, it was really nice to hear, um, what's going on. And then I did a quick run-through of all the different open items. Uh, we continue to be involved and we'll have an update on the bus transportation in terms of the cameras. Uh, we obviously, um, we, what happens with the food services bid, um, we continue to work on, on, on a variety of different topics. One of the other topics that we also spoke about were the parent checklists. Um, the parent checklist that were established, um, at each school in conjunction with parents through PTAC and administration. Uh, Kate O'Donnell, our webmaster, um, said that she would reach out to principals, which she did promptly the next day, um, and said that she would sit with them again to go over the checklist. What the checklist is, just for those people who might not be familiar, it's really giving a parent a, a, a view into the school, um, through the lens of another parent as to what they might need to know about the school, be it who to contact, um, you know, little nitty-gritty things about different aspects of that particular level in that particular school in terms of positive interaction. So, um, it was an initiative that we, we started a couple of years ago. Um, the parents started, um, and now we just wanna continue to refine it. We have a, a lot of new administrators this year at our elementary level. So we wanna make sure that that's consistently moving forward in the right direction. So, um, it was a, I thought it was a really good meeting. I, I thought that, you know, again, we have, we tend to have a good turnout. Um, our last meeting, well, excuse me, we have a May meeting. And then I'm not sure if we're having a June meeting. I don't think we have one on the books. Um, but if there's some things that should arise, we will. But we do have our May, May meeting, uh, which, uh.
What's the date?
I believe it is.
Sixteenth? The third Tuesday?
No, I think it's the third Tuesday. So I wanna say that it's, is it the sixteenth?
Yeah, because the first is a Monday. So it's.
So it'd be the sixteenth, six o'clock here. So, thank you. Did I get it all? I hope, okay.
Um, thank you. Uh, plan of conservation development?
Uh, nothing new. We, we had our second meeting. Unfortunately, we also had a board meeting. So I decided to come to this.
Okay. Thank you. Um, food services, strategic plan committee?
Nothing new. Ed, do you wanna just mention, I know it's not the strategic plan, but the update in terms of where we are with the bid?
Sure.
Yeah, we had a, uh, a pre-bid meeting, mandatory pre-bid meeting. Uh, four companies showed up. Uh, Sal from purchasing was there, Alan and myself. We answered questions. Uh, they all went on a field trip to, uh, middle school cause it was a half day for high school. So they weren't in there. Uh, there were two questions that we still have to get an addendum out, but everything is set. May second, the bids will be open at two o'clock.
What, what day? May second?
May second.
Thanks. Okay. Perfect. Um, last, uh, school lighting and roof project updates? I'm, I'm not sure we have any.
Well, it's actually the, the new agenda. There was a matter.
School lighting, I guess.
School lighting and then, stage lighting and then four school window.
Oh, that's why we got the new agenda. I'm so sorry.
And Ed has updates on.
Yeah, but, yeah, we're still, as you remember, the fellow.
Sorry about that.
From, uh, Silver Petrocelli.
That's right.
At the, uh, operations meeting.
That's right, yeah.
And they're still working on the, uh, specs. So they're not finalized yet for.
Okay, fine. And then lastly, uh, the four school window replacement project?
This, the same thing.
Same thing.
It ties all together.
Okay, ties in. Very good. Thank you. Um, item eleven, old business. I do not believe we have any. Item twelve, instructional committee. Mr. Che?
Thank you, Roxanne. Item, uh, twelve point one is approval of graduation date and last day of school.
So this is what everybody's been waiting for. Uh, we, based on our snow days, our last day of school will be Friday, June sixteenth, and that'll be graduation also at both high schools. So, um, barring a May, um, snowstorm.
Oh, please.
We will, um, be, that'll, that'll be our graduation and our last day of school. So it's nice to spend on a Friday. Um, and we're, we're excited because that is very helpful, obviously, for families and help also at project graduation.
Right.
And to get a better volunteer turnout on a Friday so that people don't have to work the next day.
That makes sense.
Now we just have to hope for good weather. So we will communicate, the principals will communicate this out to all parents tomorrow at the high school level in particular. Um, and then we also will have board assignments. If you're interested in participating in, uh, or attending a graduation, please let Linda Lavelle know and she can let the school know as to which school you plan to attend. And then you'll get a formal invitation, uh, with the times and parking and all those things.
So though, just for a, a point of clarification, it says approval. Uh, do you want, do you need us to actual formally take, uh, make an approval here or? Are we good or?
I, I, it, I think it's always good that the board just approves it. So if you wanna just say.
Okay, so if I can get a motion, um, to approve the graduation date and last day of school for the Wallingford School District will be Friday, June sixteenth. Well, I need a first first. Well, I said, I'm looking for a, a motion.
Oh, you, oh, I thought you said you made a motion.
No, I'm looking. Okay. I've got a first and second. Okay.
That's okay.
Good. Okay.
I was gonna, it's good that you did it cause I was gonna make a motion that they go all summer.
You will be a fan favorite there. Okay, I have.
Just kidding.
I have a first and second. Um, any further discussion? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. So officially June sixteenth is the last day. Um, superintendent's non-renewal recommendation?
Yes, uh, this is that time of year that we do this, um, as recommendation based on our attorney. Uh, I just do wanna clarify because if people do follow us along each, follow along with this conversation each year, they'll note that those are change in practice. Um, and this was approved by our attorney that we do not need to read through every single person's name. But I will allude to a list that's attached. If anyone would, would see that list, these become part of, that list becomes part of the minutes. So, um, that will be part of that process. So in my capacity as superintendent of schools, I recommend that the Wallingford Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the attached non-renewal list effective at the end of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statute, section ten dash one fifty-one, and that the Board of Education authorized me to furnish written notice of the action. You should know that the above-named teachers, um, have been advised that I intend to make this recommendation. If the Board of Education takes action on my recommendation, the teachers have the right under Connecticut State General Statute, section ten dash one fifty-one to request the reasons for the board's action to non-renew their contracts of employment. Further, I also recommend that I be authorized and instructed to communicate notice of this action by the Board of Education to the affected teachers and to respond for the board to any appropriate requests that may be forthcoming from the teachers of their representation, representatives as provided in the teacher tenure law.
Okay. And, uh, item twelve point three, approval of superintendent's non-renewal recommendation. I make a motion that pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute, section ten dash one five one, the Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the non-renewal list at the end of the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year as recommended by the superintendent of schools. I further move that the superintendent of schools be directed to communicate this action of the board in writing to the affected teachers and that the superintendent be authorized to respond on behalf of the board to any requests for a hearing if required by law or for other information which may be forthcoming from the teachers or the representatives pursuant to the applica- applicable provisions of the Connecticut General Statute, section ten dash one five one. And that the superintendent be directed at any response for a hearing. If a hearing is required by law, indicate that such hearing is to be before the Board of Education. The. The.
Okay, so you.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And item twelve point four is acceptance of resignation. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Vanessa Amrell effective June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And item twelve point five is a discussion and approval to apply for federal adult education funds, English language acquisition, and integrated English literacy and civics education, American living, a collaborative endeavor.
Yes, and if I may, we have four grants and Sashi Govan, Director of Adult Education, is here this evening.
Welcome, Sashi.
The first three grants you have heard before, so I don't think she probably needs to go into great detail. Those are renewal. The last grant is an exciting opportunity that I would, if you don't mind indulging us, Sashi, with a little bit about that. It's a collaborative with Meriden and Cheshire.
Is that twelve point eight?
That's twelve point eight.
Okay.
But, so if she could just explain that and then you could go back and.
Okay. Do you want to put them all together?
Yeah, you pretty much could.
Let, let me first start. Good evening, first of all. Thank you for having me here. It's a long night for me and I'm sure it's a much longer night for you all. Being new to this process of grant writing, um, this has been a very exciting couple of two weeks, because they did, the state gave us a very little time for turnaround time for us to turn in these grants, hoping that not many people will apply. But we are applying for four grants. Just a quick note before I talk about this grant. Roxanne, you had asked about what's happening to the students who are, you know, seventeen plus years or twenty-four. And that's where the Wallingford Adult Education comes in. You know, what we do is we capture all those floundering adults and we show them the pathway to the different careers. And our grants are ones that actually support all of those. Especially the adults who live in our community, who are the English language learners, who have, do not have the basic skills or who have just graduated. We find a way to bring all of those people in to get them become productive citizens in our community. And knowing with what the VOA, which is the Workforce Innovation Act, has, you know, spelt out with the Workforce Development Board, some of the major areas, which is manufacturing, STEM areas, the biggest need. So we have gone for all these grants to get people involved and try to give them the opportunity to be able to become, you know, productive citizens, meaning give them job opportunities. So that's just a little highlight of what we are doing at Adult Ed, and we couldn't do it without the Board's support. I mean, Board has been extremely supportive of adult education. And we, we thank you very much and I hope we continue to have that support, because I know with tight financial times, it is important to look at that population too. Because looking at Dr. Menzo's PowerPoints, I mean, our English language learners have increased and they do come to us. And we do offer that niche in adult education for all the rest of the population that, you know, not, the K through twelve doesn't necessarily hear about. This new grant that we are going for is the National External Diploma Program. That's another way of students to obtain the high school diploma. The GED has become extremely competitive, very hard. So if you have an eighth grade reading and math level, it's going to take several years before we can bring those students to the GED level. Gone are the days when you said, you know, okay, oh, I, they just got a DED, but GED, but it's not. It's very competitive these days. They've raised the bar so high that not everybody can do the GED. What we at Wallingford offer is the NEDP, which is the National External Diploma Program. It's an online, performance-based, and it's for the mature adults. People who are already working, but they know they can't advance in their careers until, unless they get the high school diploma. So we have been offering that for, you know, twenty-plus years in Wallingford with the support of the Board. That's the program we've been offering. What we are doing is we have an opportunity to apply for a grant called the Program Enhancement Project. So it, we have to have an existing project in order to enhance that. And with the help of Dr. Menzo, we've reached out to Meriden and Cheshire. They do not offer that program there. So they are willing to send us students, provided we get this grant. So we have quality teachers who need extensive training. Because we are teaching these students not only just to get the high school diploma, which is all online, performance-based. But we also teach them digital literacy, because they have to do it all online. And they come in the evenings or mornings based on, you know, their work schedule. So they come and they take, and they work on it anywhere from six months to a year, a year and a half, and then they get their NEDP. So this is the collaboration with those two districts, with the understanding that they will send their candidates who fit their profile and have the minimum score required to get into the NEDP program. So that's a new grant. The, the other three grants, we have done those before, except that this year they've changed a couple of the process. So writing for the grant was much more lengthy a process. But we have been offering these services. When we talk about the first one, if you look at your memo that I had sent earlier, the English language acquisition and the civics. We work in collaboration with SCOW. So we offer classes both at the Adult Learning Center and at SCOW. So we, Wallingford Adult Education has a lot of partnership with the local community organizations. So we, we work with SCOW, we, we work with those people who have some intermediate and advanced ESL skills. So we, when we say we work with them, we teach them everything for picking their career, career pathway. Helping them with the job skills, like the soft skills that everybody talks about, meaning, you know, what is the proper etiquette to go and, you know, to a job interview? And we have some of the programs, we have online programs to help them with the career inventory. We do not use Naviance. We use what's called a career cruising. That's also an online program that's specially for Adult Ed population. Because Naviance is extremely large and has many facets that it's not applicable for adult education. So that's one of the grants that we use. Along with the, with these political climate, we have a lot of people who want to go for the citizenship. So through this grant, now we offer those classes for citizenship too. So that's the first grant, the IEL civics. The family literacy is something where we have helped quite a few parents become familiar with the school that these children are in. This is elementary school children, K through, pre-K through two. Those are, that, those, that's the target population. So the parents come to the school where the, their children are at. And we have teachers, one who teaches the adult, and then we, um, the children are brought in with the adult. And we have classes for them twice a week. What this has done is when I've looked at the scores of these students in their star reading, star literacy scores. Eighty-two percent of the students who were in the family literacy program did not need intervention and they are at grade level reading. I'm sure the school teachers had a major part in it. But having the parents understand the curriculum, giving them practice to go home and read to the students. That's what we actually prep the parents on. How to read to your students when you go home. What do you have to do? We, some of the books are bilingual text, but we, just so they could get comfortable with that. And part of that program, we, five weeks in the spring and five weeks in the fall, we offer classes for those parents. Very much things that they, they need to know about school, like how do you get on Power School? What do you do to talk to teachers at parent conferences? You know, how do you access Power School portal? And then one, last week, we had Kathy Nealon come and talk about, you know, what kinds of vaccinations do the children need? If you have head lice, what do you, you know, what do you do? I mean, practical information that they're afraid to, you know, that they do not know. And last week, we had Eloise Hazelwood come and talk about, you know, um, lead paint. You know, a, a, a Spanish interpreter talk about, you know, how do you detect? And some, one of the parents was saying, my kid actually has lead poisoning. Now what do I go? How would my, what do I need to do with the school? How do I approach the school for that? You know, what can I do? So parents come with very valid questions, and this is a very comfortable, safe environment for them to ask those questions. And we have Adriana, who works at SCOW, come and co-teach these lessons. Those, the five sessions in the fall and five sessions in spring. And then we had Jane, I don't know the last name, from the library, our Wallingford Public Library. She talked about the summer programs. We had Parks and Rec come and talk about, you know, how they can enroll to go to the pool. So things that they know this in the community but are afraid to ask. So we provide them all these opportunities through this. The, the third one, the workforce readiness. It used to be called the Twenty First Century STEM Grant, but now keeping up with the VOA Act, they call it workforce readiness. This is basically everything that our counseling staff does, but in a more condensed role. It is the exploration of career pathways with the help of Kim. I've been able to reach out to a couple of agencies in town to give us opportunities for job shadowing. And Jay, you have been very helpful in getting us to, our students to get the job shadowing experience. The basic skills, you know, cover your tattoos, remove all the piercings if you have to go to interviews. You know, things that they do not necessarily think about, uh, young adults. But, but those are the things that, you know, we prep them, practice with them, you know. How do you, how do you sit when you go for an interview? How do you dress when you go for an interview? And, you know, what is it that you really want to do?
Don't use your cellphone in an interview.
Sounds basic.
We start with, don't use cellphone in class first.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but, but the, but what we do is we, we really market all these to our students who are the ones that, you know, that are left out, so to say, or have forgotten about high school and then they come back. And, and we have students who are right now, which is not mentioned here. We just, last year, Dr. Flinter applied for a tri-town grant, which is a collaboration with Meriden and Middletown. That actually captures all the high school graduates who graduated and who are between ages seventeen through twenty-four. If they need to go to any certificate program, that grant offers them opportunities. You know, provides internship or pays partially for that.
Can I ask a question about twelve point eight again? We, historically, we had the GED program and then we had the Wallingford High School Diploma or something like that.
We have, we have three programs. We've historically had three programs. So this is not a new program for Wallingford?
Is this going to supplement one of those? That's what I was.
This is going to allow us to increase enrollment and enhance it.
Which one?
The, the diploma program.
It's going to enhance what program, what?
This, it's called the National External Diploma.
Diploma program. So it's the National External Diploma program, but we have the GED and then we have the third. And the third program is the?
What?
This is the third program. We have the credit diploma program for our regular high school.
That's what you're, that's what he's, that's, thank you.
This is going to be a third one?
We already have it.
We have this.
We already have all three. Yeah, because we couldn't apply for it if we didn't have it.
Okay.
So we have it, but Cheshire and Meriden don't.
Okay.
Can I ask, what are the financial implications if we get these grants?
The NEDP, we are, the Board is already supporting it. So this is just to get additional, you know, staff, additional students to the program.
Okay.
It strengthens our program.
So there's, well, so there's.
It won't necessarily, it's not going to adjust our overall budget.
Okay.
It's going to allow us to expand services that if we don't get it, then we can't expand the services.
Gotcha.
So reach out, farther reach to more.
Right. And then the other three, is there, what's?
Those are already factored into our budget, um, because we've gotten them. In the years past, we've gotten them.
Right, that's what I figured.
We're hopeful that we would continue to get this.
Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
So, I mean, and we do have the community supporting us in some levels too, so. So these are, in a nutshell, the, the ones that I'm seeking your approval for.
Very good. Great programs. Thank you, Sasha. Should I do these individually? Do them together?
Okay, they are individual, yes, yes.
Great, thanks. All right. Item twelve point five, approval to apply for, for the Federal Adult Education Funds, English Language Acquisition and Integrated English Literacy and Civics Education, American Living, a Collaborative Endeavor. I make a motion for approval to apply for the Federal Adult Education Funds, English Language Acquisition and Integrated English Literacy and Civics Education, American Living, a Collaborative Endeavor.
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Item twelve point six, approval to apply for the Federal Adult Education Funds for Family Literacy Services, Parent and Child Literacy. I make a motion for approval to apply for Federal Adult Education Funds, Family Literacy Services, Parent and Child Literacy.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Item twelve point seven, approval to apply for the Federal Education, Federal Adult Education Funds, Workforce Readiness, Exploration of Career Pathways. I make a motion for approval to apply for Federal Adult Education Funds, Workforce Readiness, Exploration of Career Pathways.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and that motion carries. And lastly, twelve point eight, approval to apply for the Federal Adult Education Funds for expansion of the National External Diploma Program. I make a motion for approval to apply for the Federal Adult Education Funds for expansion of the National External Diploma Program.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and that motion carries.
Perfect, thanks. I appreciate it, Jay. Item thirteen, Mr. Broder, operations.
Thank you. Operations Committee on April seventeenth, unfortunately, was not able to attend, but I'll go over kind of the highlights. Obviously discussed our cafeteria report, our Board of Education financial report, and update on the budget process. Additional items that were discussed was the naming of the Lyman Hall Counseling Suite, the food certification, which we'll talk about in a little bit, and a timeline for calculating class rank. And finally, the administer of the high school health survey, which I believe was approved to move forward in the fall of two thousand seventeen. That was the meeting. Item thirteen point two, approval to implement two thousand seventeen, eighteen healthy food certification statement. Addendum to agreement for child nutrition program ED zero nine nine, consideration one, consideration two. So I make a motion to approve consideration one as stated below. I'm assuming I have to read consideration one?
We have to, like Sasha's, we have to submit them to the students part of the grant.
Trying to be quick here, but, all right. Consideration one, healthy food option. Pursuant to section ten, two fifteen F of the Connecticut General Statute, the Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempt from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period from, of July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. The certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Perfect, thank you.
Hold on.
Oh, wait.
Consideration number two.
Oh, I've got you, that's right. Yeah, yeah, I apologize.
Consideration number two, so.
I apologize.
I make a motion to approve consideration number two as stated below. Consideration number two, exempt, exemption for food items. The Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale of two students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at the location of the event, and the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled. more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and inter-scholastic debates are events, but soccer practice, play rehearsal, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held.
Second.
All those in favors, or any discussions, excuse me?
I just have a question. Why do they call out specifically soccer games? Why can't, I know, but, just, that's bizarre.
I just want to go on, we just need to go on the record that the Board of Education did not pick that example that came from the state of Connecticut.
Thank you.
So that is not the Wallingford Public Schools-
Thank you, yeah, okay, that's what I'm gonna say. Thank you, yeah, any sports activities, that's all, each and every-
Any sports activities, like-
That's okay, whatever.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. So, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
I will just go on the record, letting everyone know, I played in Italian Soccer League when I was in middle school and elementary school, goalie. So I, that was certainly not me who put that in there. Just want you to know that.
Well, thank you for sharing, Dr. Menzo. Item fourteen, new business, I do not believe we have any. Item fifteen, Dr. Menzo, your administrative report, please.
Just some very quick things, but very important. This Friday, first, let me start with the really important one. As many of you might have read in my Monday memo, we had a student who was recognized as a National Merit Scholar.
That is, that was an unbelievable article in the paper about-
Linus Kofer.
Unbelievable.
You remember him probably from last year. He was one of a handful of students internationally, around the world, that received a perfect score on the German culture and a test, AP test. He's a phenomenal young man. He is one of thirteen National Merit Scholars that were announced last week. He just is incredible, incredible young man. So we're very proud of him. We're obviously very, very thankful to all of our staff who have worked with him over the years to cultivate his abilities. He came to us as a, as an EL student, actually, and worked through our system. So one of his actual teachers reached out to me today, and she said she was so happy to hear about his progress when I put that in the message. So I just want to say congratulations to Linus. He was one of our students who traveled to China with me over the summer. So, he's, he's, again, a great student. So congratulations to him, and he'll be recognized at our May Board Meeting. But just a couple of other quick things. If you're in the mood for some Asian fusion food, Friday night at Hubcap, our food services program out of Lyman Hall, the Cook's Table will be doing a pop-up restaurant in the evening, but then also Saturday during the day. So if you can't make Friday night, you can make it on Saturday. This is a phenomenal venture. The students had to work with the Health Department. They had to go through all the different requirements that any restaurant would have to go to and go through. And they did all the ordering, the menu design and development. So we're very proud of that program.
Do you, am I correct in saying this, that you have to get a ticket in advance for that? So I, I want to just make sure for-
Yes, you have to, it, it's on our website. It's a pop-up of the pop-up on our website. So if you go to our website, you know, you can purchase the tickets ahead of time.
I think you could walk in, but your chances of getting a ticket are slim.
Yeah, they're, they're really, they're very confident that this is going to be successful. We look to make this the first of many opportunities for our students. I know they want to go into more of the baking aspect next year, potentially. So they're looking at a variety of different things. So, again, we really appreciate the hard work of our students. Tomorrow night, I will be a judge at the Townwide Spelling Bee, sponsored by the League of Women's. And it should be interesting, because it always is. So we're looking forward to that opportunity. Wednesday evening is the Town, the Town of Wallingford's Volunteer Awards, the recognition awards for students. That is a great evening, it's at the Town Hall. I, I really, it's a great, it's amazing to hear the number of hours that our students volunteer for, and offer community service to our town of Wallingford. On Friday evening, or, excuse me, Thursday evening, I won't pass that, we have a, our Town Council, or maybe I am looking to pass that. We have our Town Council presentation of our budget to the Town Council. Last week, we had a very successful meeting, a town hearing. And this Thursday is our, now, presentation and questions from the Town Council. That is at six thirty in the Town Council Chambers. On Wednes, on, excuse me, on Friday, we have the WEF, Wallingford Education Foundation, Alumni, Distinguished Alumni Dinner, also at Xandry's. So I will be stopping to get my appetizer for Asian food, and then-
Ah, there you go.
At, at the dinner. Next week, I, just a couple of quick things. We have, on Thursday, we have a, we're sponsoring with Hubcap Wallingford, as well as Masonic, a workshop for families and the sandwich generation. So people that are taking care of their parents, but also have their own children. What are some, you know, how, how do you work through that? So that's being offered in collaboration with, again, Hubcap Wallingford, and also Masonic at Hubcap. And we're very pleased to have that opportunity. On Friday, we have a home business program that we're coordinating with Hubcap and our schools to help identified home business owners, and opportunity, and give them an opportunity to meet with, with similar individuals, and experience and explore the use of the Hubcap to develop and grow their business. Also on Friday, the highlight of my week next week is Cinco de Mayo at the Senior Center. So we are having our annual Cinco de Mayo celebration for our senior citizens. That is sponsored by Lyman Hall and Sheen, World Language Teachers. The students come over, they dance, they, they, they have activities with the seniors. We have flamenco dancers, we also have, we have the mariachi band. And we're very, very fortunate that we have donations from Panceros Restaurant, the new Mexican restaurant in town, who's donating all the food. We also have some donations from SCOW, and from other, from other entities in the community. So we're very, very fortunate, and it's, it's always a great event. It's, it's so much fun. And our high school students do a remarkable job, and they're just the highlight of the day for those, the seniors. So, I just wanted to share those with you.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Menzo. I'm sorry, yeah.